I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome everyone. No appointments, public comment. Anybody want to address the board?
We, Mr. Harmon will be later on in the agenda, but then what was your name again?
So the main thing I just wanna quickly talk about is, so I'm a scout from Chupan, out in Champagne. And I live here in Saint Joe. And I'm working on, well, I'm gonna start working on my Eagle Scout project soon. I was just wondering, asking the board if, if you had any interest in either bat boxes at the sports complex park to reduce like the amount of bugs, so the basket of somewhere to live in, like actually really reduce the amount of bugs that are present there as or like Gaga ball pits at either Cold Park Sports Complex or EJ Hackler. So if like you were interested in any of those, I was just wondering. Their Gaga ball pit, so it's like a game that we do at scouts and that they have a lot of other stuff too.
Okay.
Yeah. So I was just wondering for your opinions on either those who'd be viable, something that the, that you might think the village might need.
I don't mind bat boxes out there. I was kinda thinking the same thing.
I actually, I just, you know, we'd have to have something probably formal and plans.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just seeing.
I mean, I like both ideas. I could see like, I could see a lot of the kids using Gaga pits.
I don't know what a Gaga pit is.
Typically, it's like a, you guys.
It's like a hexagonal or an octagonal pit type thing with walls with a like a kickball. It's some type of game where you just like last person standing man.
It's a little like build like landscape timbers.
Okay, yeah.
Build it. So it's not like a dug in the ground pit, full of swampy. It's just like an enclosed area to hit the ball off of.
Yeah, I'm just looking for ideas. I'll have a written plan whenever the time comes, probably around spring or summer.
Let's focus on the back.
Yeah, of course.
Give us some kind of a proposal and we certainly take another consideration.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. It's eight items on it tonight. The regular board meeting minutes, approval of bills for eighty six thousand six hundred sixty one dollars. Treasurer's report, investment recommendations, a resolution canceling the regular regularly scheduled meeting on December twenty third, authorizing the village administrator to make timely payments of routine pills, bills of making temporary adjustments to observe holiday hours, uh, December twenty fourth and January second. Bank resolution adding the mayor and administrator as signatories along through bank. Consideration and possible approval of series twenty twenty A and twenty twenty B bond abatement ordinances. Are there any questions about any of those items?
I do have one question about the new year's staff. Okay with moving that to the prime?
I pulled and there wasn't any like opposition to it.
So the only thing.
It makes a four day weekend instead of coming back for one day.
Yeah. Well, I understand. I just, that's the only thing I have a question about. I'm good with it.
We'll have people take off more than just the holiday. There's people that are gonna be taken off, you know, like the whole week, that week or whatever. So it doesn't really, you know, but yeah.
Need a motion to approve them?
For the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All, yes. Peters?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wolf and Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion passed, let's go.
All right. New business, consideration of possible approval of bid of a bid to Duce Construction Company to install a sewer tap at two oh two West Evergreen. Just like those last what we did.
Sherman.
Sherman, this is a empty lot that a house is being built on and for some reason there was never pad put in there for that lot. So we need to, uh, Duce came in as the low bidder and we need to approve the, Duce is the company to install it. The house I think is already.
Yes. We have another one on fourth court that's going up as well, but we're not going to display this being the same issue for that one.
So any discussion about that or questions? We hear a motion to.
Motion no proof.
Second.
I'll second.
Hey, any more discussion, go ahead.
Peters?
Yes.
Jones?
I'll say.
Wolf and Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passed. Five oh one station.
All right. Second item on new business is consideration and possible approval. I'm in an ordinance having children, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment finance district redevelopment agreement by and between the village of Saint Joseph and Trinity Acres Poundings. This is the development across from the middle school, south and middle school. What's going in. Eventually, he obviously has to go through subdivision processes and zoning and all of that process, but he's applied for TIF consideration. He is in the TIF zone. This is, I believe, Corey Swanson's project.
So this is a fifty percent developer split, so the taxing bodies would get their percentage first. And then whatever is remaining is would be split fifty percent to the developer up into their eligible development cost. And then the remaining fifty percent would go to the fund. So he is agreeable to it and just recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve and second it.
Any further discussion?
Jones?
Yes.
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 Brad?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Motion passed, let's go.
Right, third item on the new business, consideration and possible approval of staff recommendation of health dental vision annual renewal for twenty twenty six.
So as you all most likely know, our previous barriers is no longer our option. And the next most viable option to search to is for the crosswind shield. And in your packet, the specific plan is in there for your consideration. And then in addition to that, we have been with principal for dental and vision. Staff looked into this a little bit more and the cost savings for Sun Life were, you know, pretty substantial and it's relatively the same exact coverage. So we'd recommend switching from a principal to Sun Life as well. But I think we can answer any questions that come up. Um, there's a proposed motion and recommendation in your packet. And this as a point of clarification, we will continue to remain the HRA at the same exact standard. Some no changes with that. And there will be no coverage for dependent care at this point.
All things we can reconsider in the future, but just because top line is going belly up, you have to make the changes. And of course, it's increasing.
Everything.
Everything else is, you know, lack of competition, local marketplace, that's it. Brad, so any discussion? Air motion? To accept.
Make motion to accept as presented.
I'll second.
Okay.
Wolf and Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, number four. Uh, presentation by Mr. Hartman regarding the wastewater plant projects and a review of engineering efforts. Come on us.
No disrespect to them, just covering up a little surgery I have. Listen, you want to see? Um, I, I was retained to analyze and review the situation with your wastewater treatment plant. And, and so that's the first thing that I'd like to speak about. Uh, basically where we are right now, it makes no sense to do anything but finish the project. And, and you know, the concrete's out there, the lobby equipment's out there, all the money's been already invested. So, uh, that's a situation. I think we just go ahead and finish that. Uh, the second thing is with that done with Elm Street's costs and with your old, uh, two thousand nine indenture. Uh, you know, you have about nineteen million dollars of outstanding, uh, debt. And, uh, next year, the payments are kicking in big time. Uh, so, you know, it's a situation that, uh, the cost that's been incurred. Uh, and I'm not gonna go back and go over all the reasons why the prices change and all that kind of stuff. But the costs that have been incurred, uh, will cause a significant rate uh, adjustment requirement. So the first thing that, uh, looked as, are we upside down? Uh, are we, uh, have too much debt versus the value of the assets? Uh, so if you can, you can have a house upside down, you know, and same type of thing. Well, the, the answer is no, we're not. And which is a good thing. Uh, we have about nineteen million bucks in, in debt. We have a cost approach evaluation, which I did uh, for about twenty four million for the assets. Uh, and looking at the market here, uh, you probably won't get twenty four million for the system. Possibly something in the order of about twenty two million, but still that's strong. It still allows you to, uh, the fees, that means pay off, uh, your, uh, sewer plant debt, your Elm Street debt and your old debt. So you'd be debt free in your wastewater system and still have, uh, in the order of about three million dollars left over from that. Um, but that's selling your assets to be able to do that. Why did I look at it that way? Uh, the reason is because if you hold on to it, I looked at a very, very positive, uh, high growth rate. No investments, all that kind of situation, and it's still not competitive for you to hold on to it. When you look at it realistically and I apologize that this didn't get through to everyone, uh, earlier, but I did another analysis on rates relative to it. And it comes out, you know, from a hundred and three dollars, uh, per typical residential customer to about a hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents at the end of that short period of time. Uh, that's a fairly significant change. Uh, before we started this process, you know, the rates were down around thirty, in the thirties. So to go from the thirties to almost a hundred and fifty is big modification. Now, what are the considerations? Do you have the, uh, backup, I'll call it, the re- the additional resources? If, you know, two or three for operators to get sick? No. Okay, puts you in a very bad situation. A larger company that you might sell to, and there are many out there. Uh, uh, they do. You have all the various resources to bring in during emergencies. The answer is no. But these other large companies do. Can you take uh, these facilities and, uh, benefit from them? Not really. It's an essential use. It's wastewater, you know, public health, safety and welfare. So it's really a situation of obligation. Do you have risk right now relative to permits, et cetera? Yes. You can be fine. You can have consent orders, et cetera. Uh, will things change in the future relative to regulations? Uh, possibly not. But more than likely, yes. And that will require additional investment and possibly, uh, some regulatory uh, consultation, discussions, et cetera. Do you really want to be in this business? And when you go through all the stuff, look at all these considerations. And, uh, I've got gray hair. I've lost a bunch up there. I used to own two utilities. I've sold them both when I was younger. My wife would say, get in a phone call three AM in the morning and, and you're gonna go out and fix it and burn bed, you know, that kind of thing. She didn't really like it that much. And it's a, it's a tremendous responsibility. It's, and you have to do it. It's an obligation when you own it. Do you need to have that obligation? No. Are there other things you can do with the source of revenue? Yes. So why? That's, that's the question. Why? And I think that, uh, the situation is you don't own your water system right now. It's working pretty well. Things are good. Wastewater is much more difficult to run. So why would you hold on to something that's much more difficult? Doesn't make any sense, right? So what I did is I looked into, uh, bidders. I did mention that, uh, there was, uh, uh, a net, uh, positive, uh, situation. You now I get the three million dollars, but you also get, uh, the reserves that you have in your, your, uh, accounts. They're, they're recovered for any lawful purpose. So that's what is good. The services provided, but not yet, uh, bill. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that. Uh, you'll get that back. Uh, the accounts receivable is also a like number. You'll get that. Okay, so there's a lot of little things that you will get uh, that, that enriches, if you will, or allows the community with your, you know, stewardship uh, to do other things and to do very positive things for the quality of life of this community. So those are the, you know, the big situations there. I talked about rates. I talked about the value. Also, we went, also went through a, uh, screen, if you will, uh, qualifying bidders. And there are nine, uh, potential, uh, bidders for the system that we will send things to if you agree and you authorize it, are fee to be prepared and sent out. Uh, the question is, are they there? They are. Are they, is there's one of them, there are two of them, they're more competitive? Abs- absolutely. Uh, if you don't know, Aqua and American are merging. So the two largest utilities, water and wastewater utilities in the state of Illinois are going to be one. Uh, it's not gonna be fully effectuated until early, early part of two thousand seven, um, two thousand twenty seven, excuse me. Um, and, uh, but what it does is it creates a situation that you do have somebody here that's going to be even bigger and stronger. So for you to be what I would call a, uh, a bucket of water into a pool, the pool just got a lot bigger, a lot bigger. So, uh, it's not gonna have that much of an impact on the rest of the users of these other bidders because they're big. Uh, so we have that already before, uh, gone through the process of qualifying them, pre-qualifying, checking their records, checking their regulatory, uh, compliance. And so we would not recommend to you, uh, any of the bidders that, uh, are what I call sort of the fly by night flippers. Uh, we're not gonna even, they're, they're out there. If they ask for the RP, of course we're by it though. Uh, but is that something we would recommend to you? It's not good for an essential service to be taken by or an entity went to win by a dollar or two, if you will. And then, and then the uncertainty of ownership, that doesn't make any sense. So, uh, we've done that also. So you can see there's been a lot of work accomplished. If you want, I, do you still have that overhead that shows the rates for the? Not all of the this is a, a figure uh, that, uh, or table, I should say, uh, that had an, uh, revised report. If we slide it over, yeah, that's perfect. That's perfect. Thank you so much. Your, your standard customer is five units within, and you know, it's a hundred, you know, cubic feet, a hundred cubic feet for her is seven hundred and forty eight gallons, which makes it three thousand seven hundred and forty gallons per month. That's your average, uh, residential customer. Uh, the previous two thousand eighteen report showed significant rate increases from sixty three dollars to this year up to ninety one dollars, as you can see. They had said that back before the bids. Back when they were thinking that the plant would be seven million dollars versus sixteen million. So obviously it would go up. I may be talking too much, but am I talking too much here? The Aqua, uh, rates and it's in my report. I have the approved rates and, uh, uh, there they are. Uh, they're at eighty one dollars, uh, for wastewater, uh, going up to about a hundred and four. Uh, Oakwood has got Nexus Prairie Path. And there's their rates. Then they go from about sixty six dollars to eighty six dollars. Um, IAWC is Illinois American Water Company. Uh, your customers would get an immediate rate reduction because, uh, the requirement is for them to merge your system into their central district. The central district has thirty communities like it. So by, uh, it would have a lower monthly rate than you have right now. And it goes up to about sixty five dollars and thirty cents by twenty thirty four. The unrealistic estimate is next column. And that goes, uh, from the one oh three, uh, up to the seventy eight dollars or so. Uh, but it just, that's not possible. Uh, the, the last column is, I called it the twenty customers column. And, uh, that goes from, uh, a hundred and seven seventy one to a hundred and forty eight fifty.
Okay, let me interrupt in just a second. For the folks out in YouTube land, when you talk about eighty customers or twenty customers, that's an assumption of eighty new, let's say, homes a year.
Correct.
To achieve those numbers or twenty new homes a year. So eighties obviously, as you said, uh, unrealistic. We're not building eighty homes in a year between now and twenty thirty four. Twenty homes would be stretching it. But it's more, it's more realistic than the maybe. I just, for folks that are watching out there, uh, wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, man. The, uh, also in that eighty column, uh, there's no major maintenance, there's no, uh, renewals and replacements. Uh, your, a lot of it's been said about your collection system to you. Uh, there's a lot of inflow infiltration. If you look at your, uh, flow rates going into the treatment plant when it rains heavily, uh, inflow infiltration means the rainwater or storm water, whatever you want to call it, um, gets into the sewer system and flows to your treatment plant. It can wash out, uh, the we want to hear all about the the mixed liquor, which is the brown stuff. It, it can get a little gross, but, uh, uh, wash, can wash that out and cause, uh, problems. So, you know, down the road, is it realistic that you will not have capital improvements on your collection system? Absolutely not. Your collection system, uh, has a lot of, you know, uh, need for improvements and you haven't even started to address those. So it's another reason why you don't want to hold on. Um, anything else on this table that you want, uh, to ask a question about? Okay. Uh, on the cost, do you have the, uh, one cost table? It's table five. Oh, yeah, we got it. Okay, I'm stuck. Uh, table one was the treatment plant and, and other associated, uh, values. RC and LD is replacing cost new, less depreciation. Uh, in appraisals, I am a accredited senior appraiser for water and wastewater as well as a professional engineer in the state of Illinois. Um, and do this commonly. So that's table one. That's why the number is so big. Uh, table two is, you know, is minor, our minor thing. Table three provides is your collection system. And, and table four provides for additional, uh, roaming stock, et cetera. So when you put it all together, it's twenty three point nine million dollars worth of replacement cost new, less depreciation value. Why is that important? That's one of the three approaches under use path, uniform standards for professional appraisal practice. And so you have cost, income and market. And you reconcile the three. Well, the income approach for you is negative because you haven't changed the rates. So that doesn't, you know, it's not right to be used. The market approach, your cost per customer is greater than the market in Illinois. So that's not reasonable to utilize. So it's just the cost approach that a praiser would look at. And that's all the people. And that's all the people who would be bidding on this would be focusing on. Is that typical? Yes. Why? The cost approach values the assets that are there. Okay, the income approach brings back the present value of future earnings, which may or may not occur. Which can skew. As you go farther and farther out from the present, from today. There's a, I call it cognitive uncertainty. With the income push, because there's all kinds of assumptions that you put in. And discount that and bring, discount that income back till today, things can happen. Okay, the market approach. Yours is a unique situation. How many utilities have basically, you know, twenty million of twenty-four million right now? I don't know of any. So how do you do the market approach? Or system? That isn't in the market. You see, you see what I'm saying? I have three thousand transactions in the United States, I have about three or four hundred in the state of Illinois. I haven't had anything that's comparable to yours. With this situation. Remember, usually. The facilities are so, are so paid for, if you will, subsidized or paid for from the income. And there hasn't been any changes in the income to do that. So that's why there aren't any. So the market approach. The income approach are not really valid. So the only approach you have is the cost approach. And we will provide that to all the bidders, because it's, you know, you're a public entity. You know, we're gonna give them all the information it can have. And then come to look at everything, because it looks good, I mean, you have good facilities. So at the treatment plant, I'm sorry, talking about everyone. But I think that's something that we would do. So when, to make a long story short, I've talked way too long. You can get out of the situation that you're in. You can net a little bit of money. You can have a long-term. Income from franchise fees, utility tax. Other things going into your general fund. Without risk. Now, it's not a lot of money, but it's some money. And you're not doing anything. No, I shouldn't say you're not doing anything for it, you are doing stuff for it, because you let the utility use your rights of work. What's involved in a transaction is that you have an asset purchase agreement. Which that guy right there. I've I've worked with him before on those things. With that asset purchase agreement, you not only have it's a sales document, an agreement. But you also have attached a franchise. The franchise says what you want. What's included in your franchise, the growth areas. I worked for Oakwood, just down the road a little bit from you. And they wanted the interchange area. There to develop. This is before it was developed. And they needed their utilities to be basically expanded up there. Well, that was a requirement of the franchise agreement. The utility, you know, did it. And you have McDonald's and and other stuff, you know, the Holiday Inn Express, who. Who said that they were coming in on the north side. Never actually came in, they're still talking about it, but they they haven't actually built. But a lot of others sell pads. If you look at all the truck stop stuff and all that, so there's a lot of income from it. That's part of the franchise agreement. And the growth areas Joe has provided or has put in, has shown me. These major growth areas that you would like to have served. Well, you don't have to do it alone. Utility can help you, they want to invest, because what do they get? A return on investment. And it's a fairly decent return on investment from the Illinois Commerce Commission, they get in the order of eight or nine percent return. I don't get that. But that's what they get. So they like to invest. So that's all I have to say for right now, but in the franchise agreement and in the asset purchase agreement. Many of your concerns or many of your things that that you want. We need, will need to talk. Sit down and talk, maybe have a work session or something like that and get those issues on the table. Everybody agreeing what you want and put that into the procurement. I'm done. Any questions?
I've got one for you, sure. I noticed it talks about assets and expenses. When you go ahead and sell that asset, you're talking about physical assets of the plant, I mean, like. Would that include like trucks or anything like that, or is that all just trivial contingent of how you worked it out?
You you sell the entire system.
This physical system, but.
And you, the rolling stock that is dedicated to it, yes. But you, let's say that you want some of the stuff for your public works. You can take that out.
Okay. Well, that's why I wanted, I didn't like trucks and other stuff that, you know, that are built. That part of the sewer plant, if they would go with it or not, I guess that could be worked out either way.
Like the tractor truck.
Well, yeah, or like the pickups, I mean, you got.
Yeah. You could, you can pick out which ones you want, which ones go with the sale.
Okay.
And. These buyers have. The the rolling stock, the inventory, all that kind of stuff. Whatever comes with your system, it's just additional stuff.
It's redundant, okay.
Well, not redundant, but additional.
Okay.
But I do have a question, what these companies that do these purchases. Once the purchase is done, they pay property taxes too, right?
Absolutely, that's another thing that goes your general funds. Right now, you're not getting anything.
Right. So franchise fees, property taxes.
And utility tax.
And utility taxes.
You don't have to tax it.
Right.
It's up to you guys.
It's potential. It's a property tax for sure.
For sure, well, the other two items, if you look at, like. There's a listing right there in my report of all these communities that American serves in the central district, you can see which ones charge what. It's up to you what you want to do, that's your your discretion. Any other questions?
Well, since you mentioned property taxes and that's all in the TIF, would that be applicable there? Property tax on sewer plants, if that's all in the TIF area, would that be applicable?
It would just be new assessed valuation, I believe, if it, so it wasn't assessed as like a. We just got our certified first assessment from our TIF consultant, and that that was not in there, so whenever things get re. If that, if this is what, if this would happen, then there would be, whenever we get a new assessment, there would be. That dollar not reflected in there, it's not understated.
Good.
Any other questions?
For me.
Awesome, thank you very much. In consideration of this. I'd like to. And Joe, do you have, first of all, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Mark. Anything you wanna chime in on before?
Not really, anything I would say is kind of a recap of what you're already said.
You've been through this process.
I've been through this before. You got a report from him that tells you, gives you some pretty hardcore numbers that give you a realistic. Concept of what it costs to own the system. And the possible advantages if you were to sell the system, but you're not obligated to do any of it. But the next step would be to put out a request for proposals. To have these companies see if they really are interested in this, and if they are, to throw numbers at us. And then if that whole package looks like it's something you want to do, great, if it turns out you don't want to do it, you're still not out. But it gives you an option, or maybe more than one option, as an alternative. And ultimately, what you're, what the attractive component to this is the fact that. Based on the fact, that based on your becoming part of a pool of other communities. When your rates are decided through the ICC, those rates could be significantly lower. Than what you'll have to charge it to keep the system, so it makes it a lot cheaper for your citizens. That's ultimately what Jerry is confirming for you. If you've got an offer that you liked. Then you cackle out the details in the final contract. And those details contain what Jerry's referencing, in other words. You incorporate what you want to have happen to the system over the next five years. And you could say, yeah, well, we will sell it to you, but you gotta tell us, you gotta put into your capital plan. A build out towards this part of town, because we want to get development going. And then that commitment gets put into the contract, so it's, it's not as simple as saying, oh, I'm just getting the sales price. And I'm gonna have cheap rates. It's also capitalizing your future and helping you. Get a growth component, so those are details that you will, would have a lot of input on later. But right now, you're kicking tires to see if it's something you really want to do, the the numbers look awfully good for your community. From a rate standpoint, so you like that component, so maybe that's got you interested, that next step is to say, okay. Nine, nine entities that are out there, tell us what you think and make this an offer, and then you go and walk away.
So, we may not get all the time there.
Correct.
Whoever wants to do this will buy the offer.
Yeah, and that's a fair point. There are nine entities out there. We don't care as long as we get one good offer, we don't care about that nine, right?
Right.
And we've got the numbers person who can tell us whether it's a good offer or not.
Is this something we need to put the stipulations in before you put out an RFP or what? Do you just put out an RFP, can we act on that this meeting, or do we need?
But the mayor will probably get into that, but it won't, it's not, it's not something that's gonna take months.
We need, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need an authorizing ordinance. Too often, because this is something significant for the village, and we probably should have an ordinance that supports this particular RFP.
Well, it also defines it, it's saying, hey, this is kind of what we want, bidders. Tell us what you can do for us, that's exactly what.
So how? We have a. Passing ordinance, we issue an RFP, how long is the RFP open? I mean, what do they, that's really what.
Yes, it's a jury question.
Oh, typically, you want to leave that open for at least thirty days, possibly forty-five.
Okay, so now we're talking about January first. You know.
Well, you've got the holidays and so forth.
We've got the holidays.
I mean.
And then it takes.
You're not, you're not selling a car, you're selling a business.
It's gonna take.
Complexities.
Right.
And because of it, you gotta give them the time to kind of look at the stuff now, you've had Jerry study the stuff. And he speaks their language, so they'll be able to reach out to him and and get things that they need, remember to ask each other what's going on. But to get your best deal, you you don't want to make it a week, you want to make it.
Exactly.
A chunk of time that gives them an opportunity.
Just trying to get everybody, their head wrapped around how long this is gonna take, because once we reach a deal, let's say we reach a deal with somebody. Then they have to apply to ICC to get approval for that deal.
That is correct.
And that may take up to nine months, I've been told.
I would say that it's realistic that it's nine months.
So we're talking if we.
Could be longer, but.
Can get going now than this time next year, we might say sold and done. You know, it may take a while. So I'd like to get going on.
That's not unrealistic, and I appreciate that the. The numbers that you're seeing on on the effect on the rates is makes this really attractive, make it happen, right? It's gonna save your channel a lot of money. So I get that. The process on this size community, you know, I've done a few of them and and I think that, you know, a year is a realistic timeframe. And what you can also do in interim is if you get a bidder that you like. You can enter into a temporary agreement with them to manage the system. And it wouldn't cost any more than what you're already spending. And then it takes the worry of having licensed people running it good and the right way. And backup crews, so the, so. Taking longer to go through the system of selling it doesn't mean you're stuck managing it, and that's an easy component to add. Once you have confidence in who your bidders.
We'll go out and hire people, if we're considering selling it, I hate to go out. Hire somebody that, you know, nine months from now, I'm gonna let go, you know, I, if we sell it, so.
Well, it's hard to find that.
It's hard to find that person, yeah.
That's the problem.
To start with.
If I'm having that in a lot of communities.
Right.
There is another side to that, is that. There, the interest keeps occurring as long as you are. And, you know, you're gonna have to come up, as Joe knows. For with remain one next year.
Next July, right?
June and July.
Which is within the nine months, so. The faster that we move on this. I I'd like to propose a.
If you want to do this, you can either do a, you can do a special meeting next week, or your next available meeting will be. Two weeks from today, so you all would need to decide that. That would give plenty of time for the ordinance and the RFP to be constructed and ready for that meeting. And then you, we would just define how long the the bid would be out. Mr. Hartman indicates somewhere between thirty and forty-five days, you would just define exactly how long you want it out, and then. Ideally, a little bit of time for staff to review proposals as they come in, so that bid tabulations could be put together and explanations can be put together. So that whenever you review it at a meeting, it's easy to digest. So if you're looking at the first, if we're looking at our schedules here, if you're looking at the first. Weekend, January, the first meeting there would be January thirteenth. So if you want to do it at your next meeting in November, that's the twenty-fifth. If you issue it from. You know, the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth through. January first, let's say. Or January second. You know. That's what you're looking at, so we just need to get it from, we need to put that together and get a firm idea of how long, you know, and that's, that way we can have enough time to review it.
Since we, we can't, since we canceled the December meeting, is anybody opposed to a special meeting to just issue this and get it done? You'd rather do that? Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I I'd rather get going. Get it moving, but I want here, and for folks listening. Everybody just think about, read that report, I'm gonna have a summary report, I'm gonna send to everybody, or I already have sent the draft of that, I'm gonna send the final version. From my perspective, what's at stake. And think about this, and next week we'll adopt the en- enabling ordinance. Authorize Joe to issue the RFP, and then like Mark said, we could kick the tires on what comes back. But if December, we get this thing rolling. The better.
Yeah, also understand, you know, you're in the holiday season, you have both, you have Christmas.
Thanksgiving, New Year's.
Thanksgiving and which is many lives, I I probably. Push it through forty-five days.
And that's fine. So we would need a. What do we need to set up a special meeting, we need a motion second to vote?
I think you could just pull yourselves as to what you want to do the meeting. And pull yourselves to direct Jerry and I to get your RFP put together and. And we'll have it done in time for that, which if we do it a week from tonight, that's no problem, I mean, candidly. Kind of have a lot of rough stuff.
What's, the difference today's the eleventh?
Could be the eighteen.
The eighteenth. Does anybody have a problem with seven PM on the eighteenth? For the ordinance and the RFP direction. For the ordinance and the RFP direction? Gives us time to think about it. I'm sure that uh. Norris back there typing this out and people reading this right now. So we're gonna get some feedback, which is good to have.
We'll have a special meeting and the. The advertisement of it might get people come in and see what's, what the facts of work. I think we've all come to the same conclusion and. Might be in the best interest of all services.
The big trigger, we may end up doing like a town hall or something, just to explain to everybody. These are the, this is the, those tables and. And that is what they're gonna be interested in.
And those, those tables with our rates, that's figured on the seven, eight million dollars, right? Not the, the village rates that listed are figured on a lower. Uh cost than what it actually is, right?
Two thousand eighteen.
Yes, so they're nowhere close to what they should, would really be right now.
The last two columns is.
That is what it is now, the last two, okay.
Yeah. Cause the twenty eighteen, that was pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Free inflation.
Pre-bid.
Pre-bid, everything's gone up so much. So it's, so. Does everybody agreeable to that? Mike, would you put out a, you guys put a, Joe put out a notice and we don't need to have a motion to make the special meeting, we just say it.
Yeah, there's consensus. You follow and.
Let it be said, so let it be. All right. Any other questions on this issue? Uh old business, I don't have any village administrative updates, anything? Nope. Uh Mark, anything else doing? Uh public force, nothing. Mayor, I don't have anything yet. I've been gone, so I'm just getting caught up. Looking from the fire hose a little bit. But uh. I think that's it. If somebody else has something. There are motions adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Like we said. Thank you, everybody.